Before we start the meeting officially, can I ask the Mayor, councillor Chris Storey, to make a little announcement, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just wanted to get members up to date with the latest running of the annual Guildford Council versus Waverley Council pancake race, which was held today, at which Waverley were again triumphant, led across the finishing line by our own Emma Diersley.
Thank you very much. We didn't have any doubt whatsoever. Right, good evening, councillors and ladies and gentlemen in the public gallery and those who are watching on the webcast. Can I draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are on the screen behind me? There are no planned exercises this evening, so if the bell goes, please leave the building as quickly as possible by one of three exits, one, two and three, the one you came in. We assemble across the road under the canopy outside Waitrose. Can I ask you all to switch your phones to silent or to off, please? And just very briefly, members of the public, I'd say, the committee, we understand that the feelings are quite emotive this evening. I ask you to be respectful of those around you, in the public gallery and the committee, and refrain from any booing, cheering or any other form disturbance. Just introduce the officers in front of me, particularly for those of you who don't know. Dan Lucas, who is a barrister stepping in to help us out at this time on the legal side, Tim Bryson, who is the senior planning officer and the case officer for this application, Peter Cleveland, head of development control, and Elizabeth Sims, the head of our planning department. So with that, let's move on to the agenda. Item number one, members, can you confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on the 15th of February 2017, I can sign as a true record of that meeting?
I agree.
Thank you very much. Two, Emma, apologies for absence, please.
We have apologies from councillors David Hunter, John Ward, Mike Ban, Kevin Deenis, Stuart and Jeanette Stennett and Brian Adams. Andrew Bolton is in attendance as the substitute. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Stephen Mulliner as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Decorations of interest prior to the meeting, Emma?
None prior to the meeting.
Any others? No, thank you very much. Questions by members of the public, have there been any?
Namaste, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving on then to the first of our two items this evening. The application is A1 WA 2016 1418 Woodside Park, Cassel Lane, Gotherming GU 71LG. Peter Cleveland and Tim are going to introduce this application.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Before Tim takes you through the detail of the application, I'll just make a few key points to assist members in relation to this application. The application seeks outline approval for the erection of up to 100 dwellings, community building and office space. All matters of detail are reserved except for the means of access. As such, the matters which members are therefore being asked to consider is the principle of the development and the detailed means of access. Whilst members will need to be satisfied that up to 100 dwellings, community and office floor space can be accommodated on site, matters relating to the appearance, scale, landscaping and layout of the proposed development are not matters for detailed consideration this evening or under this application. Whilst a number of concerns have been raised regarding the sighting and positioning of building as shown on indicative plans, these are noted, however, this is a matter that will need to be considered at the reserve matters stage should planning permission be given for the outline application. Members will be aware that this application was deferred from the joint planning committee or by the joint planning committee on the 19th of December for officers to seek the following points: seek an improved indicative layout and design; a greater proportion of proposed employment uses in the scheme; a reduction in the number of residential dwellings; and a fully worked out parking plan. As I say, Tim will take you through the specific details of the changes on the application, but having read the report, members will be aware that in responding to the amendments sought by the committee, an update or a viability assessment has been carried out by the applicants, which has resulted in a reduction in on-site affordable housing provision. Whilst a detailed assessment is confidential in nature of the viability matters, this has been independently assessed by consultants on behalf of the council and is agreed. The MPPF is clear at paragraph 173 that to ensure viability, the costs of any requirements likely to be applied to a development, such as requirements for affordable housing, appropriate standards, other infrastructure contributions or any other requirements, should, when taking account of normal cost of development and mitigation, provide competitive returns for willing landowners and developers to enable development to be deliverable. So I just wanted to make this point as a matter of fact, that the MPPF requires or allows such a viability challenge to be made, and the reduction in the affordable housing provision, as I say, what Tim will take you through, ensures that the proposed development in front of you is deliverable on the basis of what's proposed. So I'll now pass you over to Tim Bryson to take you through the detail of the application and hope those first comments will help. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Members, taking you through the slides before you. The site is located on the south-eastern side of Cassel Lane in Gotherming. It comprises a variety of buildings and hard standing associated with the commercial, industrial and community uses on the site. The site has a rising gradient from north-west to south-east, and the site surroundings comprise residential dwellings and other commercial uses. This shows the existing layout of built form on the site. Members will note the light and dark grey shading areas outlines existing buildings on the site with car parking surrounds. The green line through the middle of the site is the boundary of the defined settlement. To the right lies the start of the designated green belt and to the left lies the settlement of Gotherming. The open area further to the east comprises tree cover and open pond, which is a subject of a separate application for change of use to public open space to be heard this evening. There are currently three accesses into the site as shown with the indicative arrows. This is the indicative proposed layout for the proposal. The proposal is outlined for up to 100 dwellings, including 17 to be for affordable housing, together with open space, play area, new building to comprise D1 use-class nursery and use-class B1 office space, and retention of the existing ambulance building, following demolition of the buildings and hard standing on the site. The current plan before you shows an indicative layout showing how the proposal could be accommodated. The mix of the dwellings across the site would be 31-bed dwellings, 36 two-bed dwellings, 14 three-bed and 24-bed. So just talking you members through the indicative layout here. Over here is where the ground floor nursery use is proposed. There is currently a nursery use on site, so that's to be relocated to here. And then at first floor and second floor within the same building would be the office floor space. This is the existing ambulance station building to be retained, and the remainder would be for residential. So dealing with properties back here would be in the form of two, two-and-a-half storey residential dwellings, houses, and a mixture of other flatted buildings as well throughout the scheme. I will take you through the main changes since deferred item in December. So just going through that, the replacement of two blocks of flats at the front with two sets of terrace houses. So this has been done, which is these here. These are currently proposed to be flats, and this was to be redone over here under the original scheme, however, since deferral, the applicant has changed this to two blocks of three terrace houses to front the road. This was done following some members' concerns with having all the dwellings fronting the road being in flatted form, expressed at the December meeting. In addition, greater softer landscaping would be allowed to the front of the proposed terrace houses at the front. Additional office floor space is proposed. At the December meeting, members expressed concern with the level of office space to be provided, which was 287 square metres. The amended scheme now includes 574 square metres of office space, as outlined earlier as to be retained above the proposed nursery at ground floor level. Some alterations to the internal access road layout. So it resulted in the sense that under the original scheme, this access here would have only served the office nursery and the ambulance station. The access, there's two accesses now that would help serve the whole of the site, allowing greater permeability. Further, with the revised layout, indicative layout, there's been greater access achieved here to this building and also along here. Provision of underground car parking is proposed under the current scheme. The proposal will provide a total of 219 spaces across the site. Of the 219 spaces, 66 would be provided in an underground car park. At the December meeting, members expressed concern with the level of surface car parking required to accommodate the development. The proposal has been amended to address these concerns, which has enabled a greater level of soft landscaping and communal outdoor immunity areas that could be achieved on the surface. Further to this, 23 parking spaces would also be provided as undercroft parking spaces. I do have a plan on the next slide to show that. Greater indicative variances to the designs of the dwellings. Under the previous scheme, the indicative layout showed that the residential houses at the back here were all to be of identical design. What the applicants have sought to do is indicate that actually a varied amount of design would be proposed. Further, the flatted development within the scheme has been actually, some of them reduced in footprint in indicative roof plan form, with a block here, 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 here and these two. As Peter outlined earlier, the reduction in affordable housing from 25 units to 17 units has been done, but that's been based on viability information which has been submitted to us and assessed by an independent assessor. As outlined earlier, this is an indicative underground and undercroft parking plan the applicants have proposed. The underground parking area is proposed to be here. This would be 66 spaces and they would serve the three blocks of flats above it. This has allowed for, on this plan, associated lifts and stairwells to gain access into the flats. The proposed undercroft parking would be here, and that would serve one block of flats above it. These street scene plans show comparison to the existing street scene at the top, the previously refused street scene in the middle, and the current indicative street scene proposed below. The key aspect to draw from this drawing is really the indicative building heights to both flats and houses that would front Cassel Lane. So under the current proposal, these two here would be flats and these two would be six terrace houses that would front the road, and this is the existing neighbouring development here and over here. The application has been accompanied with a transport statement and sweat path analysis which demonstrates a refuse vehicle could enter and leave both entry points in a forward gear. The County Highway Authority has raised no objections, subject to conditions, off-site highway works and contributions towards various transport improvements in the local area. Although the showing plan here is based on the previous indicative layout, officers have reconsulted the County Highway Authority on the revised layout and they have raised no additional conditions or concerns. I'll run members now through some site photographs. So opposite the site, there's existing residential cul-de-sac here. Over here, this is a view from the eastern side looking west, so this is outside the site and this is the site here. This is the existing ambulance building that would be retained. These buildings here would be removed. You can just about make out the existing neighbouring residential properties at front Cassel Lane. Again, looking the other way, here's a closer up view of the existing properties at Sisson's Clime. You'll note they are sort of in the form of three-storey townhouses, you could say. More of a modern scheme, immediately next door to the east, and further two-storey dwellings along the road. The site frontage, largely obviously you see hard standing and commercial buildings of varying form. Going into the site, some of the buildings on the site, you see really again just a variety of industrial and commercial buildings, very large amounts of hard standing and car parking area. So members, in terms of determining issues with this application, I'd like to firstly just draw out some of the matters of principle and technical opinion. In terms of the loss of employment use to the site, the council has not refused permission under the previous application on the loss of the employment use. The current proposal now includes an increase in provision of new B1 office space in comparison to the original scheme presented. The mix of dwellings would provide a good mix and would make a significant contribution toward meeting the borough-wide need. In terms of highway considerations, the County Highway Authority has not raised objection, subject to conditions, section 278 works and contributions towards projects off-site. The site is within flood zone one, where in principle residential and commercial development is acceptable. The proposal includes sustainable drainage system to control surface water runoff at a controlled rate. The affordable housing provision has been amended from 25 to 17 units. This has been required due to the significant costs involved with the development of the site, as amplified with a viability assessment, which has been independently verified by the council's consultants. In terms of matters of judgment, I've outlined the changes between the original scheme and the current scheme in the presentation. The proposal would not enroach onto an undeveloped land and would not cause greater harm to the openness of the green belt to the south of the site. The impact on visual amenity and the air of great landscape value are a judgment. The revised scheme has sought to improve the indicative layout and resultant visual impact of the proposal, with a provision of underground and undercroft car parking to help address members' concerns. Officers consider that the proposal is an improvement on the original scheme, though this matter remains a judgment for members this evening. The revised indicative layout has been assessed by officers in relation to existing neighbouring amenities surrounding the site and remains satisfied that no material harm would arise. Notwithstanding this, subsequent detail of scale, outlook and position of the proposal will be captured under any reserve matters application. I'd like now to draw members' attention to the update sheet. Members will note the additional representations received and officers' response to those. You'll note there we put in the, the underground car parking plan was proposed, we've included that in the update sheet for clarity, and with that submission, we have recommended including that within the drawing numbers condition, condition three. So that is proposed there. And therefore, Chairman, the revised recommendation A is as follows: that subject to the completion of a section 106 agreement secure 17% affordable housing, infrastructure contributions towards off-site highway improvements, primary education, provision of and public access to rear open space, management and maintenance of on-site SUDs, and amendment to condition three within three months of the date of resolution to grant permission and conditions permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Tim and Peter. We now move to the public speaking part of this procedure. So can I invite Holly Boyle to speak? Holly is one of the objectors to the scheme. Four minutes from when you start talking, and it's the big black button.
Mr Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the committee, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Holly and I'm addressing you on behalf of CARA, the Cassel Area Residents' Association. I would first like to draw attention to the fact that the resubmitted block and street view plans for this development on the Waverley Planning Portal had no key until a late update yesterday. It was therefore not possible for us to deduce where the different dwellings would be placed and we had no opportunity to discuss their impact on the surroundings before this meeting. There were previous assurances from the applicant that he would reduce the height of buildings to two-and-a-half stories. Please note that the new plans include three-and-a-half storey buildings again. The street view shows a supposedly approved plan of a much taller office building at the front of the site. That application was approved in 2007, extended in 2012 and expired in 2015. Its inclusion in this view is now irrelevant. Technicalities to one side, the first matter we object to is again the density of the application. There is a basic conflict of interest. The applicant is concerned with the financial profit from this development whilst we as residents are concerned with the impact on our local community. Initially, we asked for no more than 67 dwellings. The applicant wanted 100. In attempt to compromise, we are willing to accept 80, but Mr Trendle still insists upon 100. To date, this application has now been rejected three times by the councillors, primarily on the grounds of density. The applicant's continued refusal to reduce the density raises queries about the financial viability of this application. We will return to this topic later. Our second major concern is the underground parking. There is a big worry amongst local residents about known issues with spring water in the Cassel area. A recent example of this could be seen at Prime Place, where the plan was for two levels of underground parking. This was not possible because of spring water problems which forced this development to deviate from its agreed parking provision and also from its delivery date. We are also very aware that there are long-term ongoing problems with water drainage at Woodside Park. The viability report for this development states multiple springs and variable water levels across the site. It also says the underground parking is quoted at the lower end of the cost calculation. The proposed drainage solution in the SUDs report is for surface water, not for managing springs. When you consider these things together, dealing with the water related to underground parking constitutes a risk to the feasibility and affordability of this proposal when it's looked at in the round. The applicant is asking the councillors to quickly approve this development on a site which has big water issues, with a knock-on risk for the provision of parking. Does he fully understand the risk and would he be able to manage this kind of situation if it arose? Does he have sufficient contingency funds available? If the underground parking cannot actually be delivered, where will the cars of the new residents park? With 2020 hindsight regarding spring water affecting Gotherming developments, it would seem unwise to rush into this. Once is unfortunate, Waitrose. Twice is coincidence, Prime Place. But three times? We are pleased to see that there has been a slight increase in commercial space in the revised plans, but our third concern relates to its overall loss. Woodside Park is currently full of thriving small businesses. We believe that there are around 50 local employers operating from this site. This proposal would see that reduced to the nursery, which the applicant co-owns, with perhaps room for three or four other office-based businesses only. One of the commercial space, once the commercial space at Woodside Park is gone, where will our local small businesses, gyms, garages, upholsterers go? There are no other suitable sites for these mixed commercial businesses in Gotherming. You may have seen the recent commercial space developed at Langham Park, which is now fully occupied by the local companies. We would point to this development as an example of a smart, sensitive, elegant solution to developing a tricky brownfield site. We would very much like to see a plan incorporating elements of this at Woodside Park. We ask the councillors to consider this development opportunity available at Woodside Park for the whole of Gotherming and reject this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Holly Boyle. Now ask the applicant and supporter, Mr Trendle.
Good evening. My name is Robert Trendle. I'm the owner of Woodside Park. I'm sure you're all now familiar with this site. In December, you gave us clear reasons for deferring this application, but the principle of development was accepted, that you felt you needed to negotiate an improved scheme. At this meeting, you asked for a revised layout, a revised parking layout, additional commercial space and reduced number of dwellings. Well, we looked at the project afresh to arrive at a balanced approach, taking into account the quality of the layout, the number of dwellings, the affordable housing, the increased commercial and the difficult site conditions, which include the topography of the site, its water table at different levels, the soil conditions which require powerful foundations and retaining walls, as well as expensive drainage solutions and It became obvious with the new layout that is before you today, that the cost of the increased underground parking would no longer make the scheme viable, and therefore we needed to consider reducing the affordable housing to make it work. We considered different schemes, but coming back to 100 units being the optimum solution, and the reduction in dwellings ceased to be a creditable solution. Even with 100 units, the viability indicated that the affordable housing that could be provided would be 17. But if we reduce this to 90 units, the affordable would be nine. And if we reduced it to 80 units, the affordable would be zero. As a passionate believer in affordable housing, we put forward the 100-unit scheme as the optimum solution. That can be achieved, taking into account both the site conditions, Waverley's policies and your preferences. This was put forward at a meeting of some of your committee members and the planning department, and it was generally accepted that the 100-unit scheme was the best option. The cost of this, delivered this scheme, i.e. the viability, was then assessed and approved by the district valuer service, who agreed that a maximum of 17 affordable units was reasonable. Some concern has been raised about density, but we did send to each of you a plan for comparison purposes, showing a reduced density of 90 units, that is 54 dwellings per hectare, and the difference in that layout is negligible. In fact, the new layout would have less than 75% of the density that currently exists on the site and less than 50% of the hard standing. Overall, we believe that the scheme presented is a far better design, with the bulk of the buildings reduced to give a much more open feel. Heights have been considered and buildings positioned in areas of the site where adjacent properties are much higher, such as Sisson's Clime. By May this year, the site occupancy will be under 50%. But we are committed to the remaining tenants to find them suitable alternative accommodation and are already in serious negotiations for their garages and others. In concluding, what you now have before is a scheme still in outline form, designed around your preferences over the last two years. We have shown a clear intention to work with you, the council, to produce a scheme that is right for this site, and we believe we have achieved that, and we ask you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Trendle. Members, to you. Councillor Williams.
First of all, I'd like to thank the officers for the presentation and the work which has gone on since December. We have had various meetings with Mr Trendle and his team. We've also discussed matters with the residents. I think, Andrew, we all note the changes in the layout, and I think we all accept that these are better than the previous scheme we have looked at on a couple of occasions. There is obviously going to be difficulties in a development of this nature, given the landscape and given the various water problems which certainly the locals and the residents and ourselves are fully aware of. But again, this is an outline application. Obviously, the drainage and the retaining wall by the lake is going to cost more money, that is quite clear. That then brings us to the question of viability, and we must accept the experts' views on that matter, and those are set out in the report pages 52 and 3. I think we have come to a reasonable compromise. Obviously, we can't achieve everything we would like to achieve. You've seen that the affordable housing has been reduced... You've seen that the affordable housing has been reduced. Obviously, we would have preferred a greater number of affordable housing. However, I think a lot has been achieved. The mixture looks better, it blends in far better with the street scene. I appreciate the concerns and share them with the residents. There is a question of density, but again, we have achieved a far better frontage to Cattershaw, which we all thought was important. There is adequate car parking, which again is very important. All in all, and taking account of the viability argument which we must accept, I will support the officers on the amended scheme, and I think, and I consider, that this is far better than the previous schemes we've looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, chairman. I'm afraid unlike councillor Williams, I still have a lot of reservations, too many reservations about this scheme. I seem to remember the last time it came before us, it was that the message that we were hoping to send was that if you reduced it to 80 units, you could have more surface parking and solve the two problems. There's been no reduction in the number of units, and now we've got basement car parking which is suddenly going to cost so much that we can't have as many affordable houses as we were told. All the way through the application documents, there are references to the 25%, and then suddenly the description of the application changes and the documents come through to us as a committee with 17%. I can't find anything in the application documents that shows this. Page 51 of the officer's report talks about amended plans and an amended affordable housing statement, January 2017, but I couldn't find it on the website. Page 52 talks about the DVS report that apparently proves the viability or non-viability of having 25% affordable, I couldn't find that on the website anywhere. We've just been shown a sweat path analysis that was clearly out of date, but I couldn't find an up-to-date one on the website. I'm really concerned, chairman, that especially the members of the public aren't being given a fair deal on this, as to being given the full information so that we can all make an informed decision. Peter earlier on talked about a fully worked-out parking scheme, but as design, layout, etc., all reserve matters, it's a nonsense to say that we've got a fully worked-out parking scheme because that whole thing could change next week. And I know it's a government thing, but this viability really does concern me. When, in my professional life, I've worked for developers in the past, and we worked out the viability before we bought the site or put a price on the site. The viability was what you did, you worked out your profit, and in those days it was known as speculative development, which meant you speculated to accumulate. So if suddenly your viability didn't quite work out, you took the hit and got on with it. But now it seems that we as a council and our residents have to take the hit over and over again in affordable housing or in section 106 contributions, just so that the developers can make a profit, and I'm really not happy about any of this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Coburn.
Thank you, chairman. I'm somewhere between the two previous speakers. I'm grateful for the changes. I don't think there's any doubt this is better than what we saw last time. And I understand people's disappointment about losing affordable homes. I have a dreadful feeling we're all just going to have to be permanently disappointed. You know, I think every time we have an application at the moment, we're always so full of optimism that, you know, it's going to come in, it's going to be exactly what we want, and then we see it, and there's always an element of disappointment because obviously we don't all get exactly what we want. This is better from the point of view of the frontage of the site, and I know that's not, you know, it's not part of this application really, but, you know, the indication is that this would be a kinder development for the existing residents than the previous one. I certainly think the road layout, the indicative road layout is better. The numbers, it's a very tricky one. I mean, we've had so many debates as to whether really 100 is ever going to be possible on this site. We now have assurances there are. I do quite like underground and undercroft parking, if the land will take it, and we're told reassured that it can. I'm really swithering on this one. I'm pleased to hear the local member feel that he could support this because that does, you know, give me some reassurance. And I'm also pleased to hear that there have been meetings between local people, the members and the officers, because obviously this is a highly sensitive site in Godalming, and we have to get it right. So certainly a lot better, certainly, you know, I'm grateful for the changes that have been made. I'll just wait and hear what one or two others have to say before I make this final decision because I really am swithering between the two sides.
councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. Well, like my colleagues, I'm really grateful to the applicant that he has made these changes. And I certainly think this is a site which is suitable for development. However, we are giving outline permission tonight, we are not giving detailed design permission, and therefore what we are looking at with all those pretty houses that we see in front of us could change when it comes into the design side of it, and we may find that we're back to the original internal design. Therefore, you know, I really can't, and I'm going to say this now probably on my own, I really cannot support 100 houses on this site without a change in density. I mean, the density on this site is horrendous. I also still, I didn't last time, still don't like the incursion into the green belt. But it is a site which is suitable for development, and I'm not going to make an issue about businesses being on the site, because sometimes you do have to make changes for businesses. But I just cannot accept 100 houses on this site, and whilst underground car parking is good, and I think that does help to give the layout a better look, there is a lot of water there, it is wet, and, you know, I don't seem to see anything, and maybe I haven't read it, but I don't seem to see anything that says we're going to do something about it. So I'm awfully sorry, grateful to the applicant for all he's done to try and get this through, and grateful to the work the local member has done, but for me, 100 homes on this site, especially a three-and-a-half-storey, you know, you've got about five or six buildings that are three-and-a-half-storey. So I'm just sorry, but I will be voting against it.
councillor Storey.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'd like to understand something a little better than I do at the moment. As I understand it, in order to achieve up to 100 dwellings, a considerable number of those will lie within the section of the site which is within the green belt. And I've read the report as to why that is justified, but it seems to me that currently that section of the land has one building in it and a lot of car parking spaces. And that doesn't seem to me to fulfil the definitions which I'm reading within the report. I'm just wondering if the officers can explain it to me so that I understand it and understand why it's justified.
Peter, Tim, who's going to take that one?
Thank you, chairman. I was just pulling up the page in the agenda. So page 39 talks specifically about this sort of cubic content of existing buildings on the site, and overall, I appreciate what you're saying, you're looking specifically at what's to the right-hand side of the plan and what's in the green belt. But overall, there is a net reduction in capacity and volume of buildings on the site, so we think it would have a lesser impact on the green belt. So taking account of redevelopment overall, and the fact that you're removing a lot of hard standing, a lot of bulky buildings, and replacing them with effectively individual houses or small terraces or flats, and reducing those sort of warehouse-type structures, it would have a lesser impact on the green belt, greater enhancement in terms of landscaping, soft landscaping which will provide a relief between buildings, rather than these large bulky, you know, warehouse-type buildings that are on the site. So I do appreciate what you say, that the rear of the site is some hard standing, but looking at the overall site, we've taken it on that basis, and there is a net reduction of volume of building on the site, so we've balanced it on that basis. Thank you, chairman.
councillor Storey.
So we're saying that we ignore the fact that part of the site is not green belt, we take the site as a whole, and say that we've reduced the amount of building across the whole site, despite the fact that the green belt part of it, in fact, there's a considerable increase in the amount of built form within that section.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, officers recommend as you do take it in its entirety on that basis. We do consider it's a redevelopment of a brownfield site within the green belt, which is an acceptable principle of development, and that's how it should be taken, and it's a net reduction of, goes from 4,814 cubic metres down to 4,775 cubic metres. But the recommendation is to take it as a whole, given the character of the site, given the brownfield element, but that's for members' judgement to take. Thank you, chairman.
I just wonder if the officers want to come back on the points raised by councillor Reynolds a little earlier on, or shall we take that a little later?
Yes, thank you, chairman. In terms of, I think councillor has referred to some information that was on the website appeared yesterday. The actual, what was put on the website was the indicative site layout which was put on the website on the 20th of January, and all neighbours consulted on the 24th of January of this indicative layout. What was put on this website yesterday was the indicative underground and undercroft parking plan, and also the same indicative site layout, it's just it labelled the flat types on the indicative flat blocks. So if I can just clarify a bit. So the, yeah, the key was on the original indicative layout, which talks about indicative heights being three-and-a-half-storey for some of the flatted buildings, two-and-a-half-storey for the houses. So the information, although appeared on the website yesterday, it was very limited in addition to what it showed in terms of the indicative layout and heights of the buildings.
Mr Chairman, could I come back on that? I wasn't discussing the amended plans, I was talking about the affordable housing statement, which has suddenly gone from 25% to 17%, and the DVS report, and also the sweat path analysis. I mean, we've all seen the revised plans, we had them sent through by the applicant. It's the other information that I was concerned about.
Peter Glugland.
Yes, thank you, chairman, thank you councillor. So the affordable housing statement, the viability statement, is a confidential statement. We can't publish that on the public file. It is available for members if they want to come and look at it in the back offices, and I know some of the local members have taken up that opportunity to look at it, but we can't publish it. If you want the specific background, our lawyer can pick up on it, but it's because of the commercial-sensitive nature of that. In terms of the 17%, that document does set out and justify why the 17% is provided, and the application was re-advertised with a description of 17%. So that was put forward, and the re-advertising which followed, following receipt of the revised scheme.
But the revised application document, on the website?
No, but the description has been changed to reflect that update. We can't publish that document, I'm afraid.
You could publish the affordable housing statement.
Chairman, I'm afraid, because it was all linked as one document, I'd love to be able to publish it, but unfortunately we're not able to.
The previous one, 25%.
And that was a policy-compliant position which wasn't on the back of a viability statement, so we can't include that. We weren't able to separate it out, it came in as one document. I can completely understand you want to have it open as much as possible, but that is the element and the way it came in, so we had to treat it as such. And there was one other point that talked about a fully worked-up parking plan being provided as well, which was, I think, the other question. And I appreciate it's outlined, but that was a specific question of the committee to go away and demonstrate a fully worked-up parking plan to meet the requirements of the offered number of units. And it is outlined, but they've gone away and provided that information to assist how that could work, and obviously that's led into the other information. And the other point that was picked up was the sweat path plan, and I appreciate that the plan hasn't been updated for the entire site, but the key point is the access is a matter of detail being considered, and that hasn't actually changed. Whilst the internal layout and the connectivity has changed, the actual sweat path analysis shows that the point of access onto the public highway, which we are considering, shows it can accommodate a large refuse or HGV. So that's the key point. And as I say, we've got a detailed indicative plan, but that is an indicative plan to take forward, and I appreciate the further comments by councillor Frost that we can't be sure of how that comes forward, but that would be responsibility of the officers if this goes through, to deal with the reserve matters and work with the applicant, all members, etc., to get a scheme that reflects what the outlines or parameters show. So hopefully that picks up on all the points.
Thank you, Peter. councillor Jen.
Thank you, chairman. I will be supporting the officer's recommendation. I'm absolutely thrilled that the owner of the site has actually listened to members of the committee. I find density an interesting one because actually 66 of these houses are one- and two-bedroomed. If they were 100 four- and five-bedroomed houses, then it really would, you wouldn't see any green grass at all. But by making 66 of them one- and two-bedroomed and in blocks of flats, actually, the open space of it is there. It's how you make your 100 dwellings, not, you know, the actual 100. It's the size of them that makes it, in my view, the density and the hard standing and the amount of building that's on the plot. It does say though, that, you know, there's a three-story at the back in the green belt, and now they're all going to be two-stories, but actually, the officer did say that some of those ones round on the green belt were two-and-a-half, although on page 39 it says they are two-story. So if you could confirm whether, when it comes back on reserve matters, that they are two-story within the green belt and not two-and-a-half, I'd be very happy. Yeah, two-and-a-half. But it says on page 39 that, in the agenda paper, that they're two-story. But I am very grateful, and I, nobody is ever, not everybody can be happy, but I think in, for, within the settlement of Godalming, I think it is a very good development, and if it was anywhere else, there'd probably be sort of four-story blocks of flats, and then I think people would be worried, but I am very happy with the changes now, will be supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
councillor Bolton.
Thank you, chairman. I'm the local councillor for this particular ward. This is a difficult application both for the developer and ourselves. The nature of the site will mean that the dwellings will be expensive to build, and there are unknowns, such as possible contamination from the old laundry. To reiterate, as we've heard before, this is an outline application with all matters reserved except for access, and it is for up to 100 new dwellings. It's a revision of a previous application and is an improvement. In brief, it has fewer houses than the original application, more parking, and the buildings will look less forbidding. Officers have drawn attention to the mix of buildings, for example on page 8 of our agenda, and the proposed street scene on page 11. In addition, a significant amount of section 106 money will be contributed to Surrey and Waverley, in total well over £300,000. The application is viable. This is discussed further on pages 52 and 53. This is discussed further on pages 52 and 53. I have seen the viability document. I cannot question certain assumptions, for example cost of development and selling prices, these are the responsibility of the valuers. But I agree with the conclusions. I have looked at the numbers myself, and I'm sure that changing one dwelling from market to affordable, for example, would affect the overall viability. The proposed development would no longer be financially sound, and would not be in the interest of the developer to proceed. Since we have deferred our decision, the applicant has made further changes and improvements, which officers have outlined on page 35. I would just briefly like to comment on the Green Belt. I accept officers' reasoning on page 40 that the development is not inappropriate. I note that the building volume on Green Belt line will decrease, as officers have outlined. The existing industrial building will be replaced by a smaller volume of dwellings. And what is also attractive, some hard standing, and there's an awful lot of hard standing in that site at the moment, some hard standing will be replaced by gardens. In conclusion, on balance, I believe the proposal with the changes that we've discussed are good enough. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Foris?
Thank you, Chairman. I've listened with great interest to the ward members and other members here this evening, and the word has already been used, it is very difficult, it is a very sensitive application. If we're to look at it on its own merits, without looking at the indicative layout, we are looking, as councillor Pat Frost said, we are looking for the principle of development to be established, with the only matters being looked at is the access. And I don't think anybody could deny the applicant that here this evening, because the site lends itself beautifully, and everybody would agree that it is a prime site for redevelopment. But like one or two of my other councillors, I do have a couple of concerns. There's no two ways about it, improvements have been made to the scheme, and it is at the expense of the affordable house, in the sense where the loss, and I take the point that my councillor also said about the number of dwellings, and I think it's a very valid one and a correct one, but again, it is at the expense of going from 25 down to 17%. I find it really difficult, because again, as I say, we've said to the applicant, we want you to go back and look at car parking, and they've come back with a great scheme, it seems, but we don't know enough about it. It's an underground car park, we know this area is subject to flooding, we know that there could be difficulties that could arise from that, so that's when it comes back to the indicative layout. At that point, you know, should we be considering that now, or should we be considering it later, and that's where I'm having a problem. My biggest problem with this application is the viability of it, because it's really cutting the cloth very, very finely here, and I'm just worried that if we continue with an application that we have before us, with the 100 dwellings, with the unknown quantities in terms of the car park, and with such a limited restriction on the time to actually do this, because you've got a recommendation there that's for refusal, I'm just wondering if we can deliver this scheme, and that would be my biggest issue here, is you have a scheme before you that says it's viable, there's been clear intentions for everybody to clearly work together, we've had expert opinion on the legal side of it, but I would question from everything I've seen and heard, is it deliverable? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Barn?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, first of all, it's good to see that the two local members agree, with some reservations, I recognise, but agree that the scheme before us is a good one. It's also good to see that the town council have absolutely said nothing at all, you may have even missed their note in there, because it said no objection, a very small amount of money. We're talking about Green Belt, but do we really believe that what is there now on that line, and if you go to page 11, let's see, there's a number of maps showing where the Green Belt line is, the settlement boundary, and there's a whole massive area which is either concrete or large buildings. Do we consider that to be beautiful now, and we should keep it, but not to demolish those and to create gardens and houses within that space? I think we've got to look objectively at these things and study Green Belt, and of course, the areas beyond, which we will be considering at a later application this evening, is creating an accessible parkland area with a lake and all sorts of improvements done to that area, which are for the benefit of not only the residents of this proposed estate, but the residents around the area, and anybody else that wishes to enjoy that particular amenity. And it looks pretty good to me, I think, it'll be very interesting. Just to comment on the representations by residents, just totally coincidentally, I was talking to a friend of mine about many other things, and he said, oh, perhaps you could advise my son-in-law and daughter about whether they should buy a house in Langham Place? Is there any problems in the area that they should consider? This couple live, what, 100, 200 yards away, in the new properties, on the same, at the opposite side of the road to this development, and have lived there since the new houses were built. How long ago is that? About two years, something in that order. So I said, well, look, all I can tell you is that there is development going forward, for a proposal going forward on this site, and there is of course the building alongside Langham Place, which has already got planning permission for development. They weren't concerned one little bit. They were quite happy with what they're in, they liked the idea of living in Langham Place, slightly larger property, and they weren't concerned being opposite this site. There is a balance to be had, I believe, between what a lot of residents feel, quite understandably concerned, and other people who feel quite happy with the idea of development. I think I ought to be supporting this scheme.
Thank you, councillor Barn. Oddly enough, you've said some of the words that I was going to point out. Godalming Town Council had no objection to this scheme, no objection at all. I look at the site, and we've been on site visits up there over the years, the officers have been talking with the applicant for five years now, we had a forum just over two years ago, and we have heard from the applicant on a number of occasions. I find that all the comments that we made at our last December meeting have been listened to and addressed. The viability section has been looked at very carefully by DVS and some of the local councillors, and they have found it to be correct. It is a very marginal scheme, we know that, they have said that. But I do find that the increase in commercial space, in the parking improvements, moving the parking areas underground, and the croft solution, which I've seen in my own ward, very successful, I might say, but many of the things that we asked for have been provided in this outline application for up to 100 homes. So I think you feel, will know which way I am going, so. Turn to councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. I, like you, am impressed in the way that the applicant has addressed all our concerns from the previous meeting, and particularly the split between affordable rent and intermediate tenants, as far as the affordable housing is concerned, and the mix between one, two and three bedroom units. He does seem to have tried very hard to agree to what we had previously agreed, and I will be supporting this application.
councillor Gray?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I too would like to thank the developer, and not every developer that comes before this committee is willing to go back and look at it. I'll stop short of congratulating him, because I don't think he's necessarily answered all of the residents' problems, that's if they can be. 100 houses on this site, yes, it's possible. I think councillor James made the point that it's really possible because of the number of one, two bedroomed houses. It is indicative, I accept that, it's indicative layout etcetera. I am sad that we are putting too many one bedroom apartments on this. I have a view that from time to time, that we over-provide one bedrooms, and we should be looking for flexibility of others, but that's the way it is, that's the way the policy in the council is. It is a shame, on a site like this, that we don't look at a full application. And this question about coming in and reserving things, at least I must compliment them on, at least allowing us to comment on access, although I don't think there's any issue on access. But if this was a full application, some of our concerns would disappear, because we would actually be looking at it, we'd be commenting on it, we'd know about the parking, we could basically drill down into other areas. So I'm sorry, it's not. But on balance, I think I would feel that I would have to support this application. It is a site that needs developing. I think the comments on the Green Belt overcome my concerns, it's hardly traditional Green Belt, it's actually, it's built on brown, it's actually not very pleasant. And I think the houses and the structure of it will actually look, once it's built up, and will be pleasing. I'm sorry that we couldn't as councillors see the evaluation, I feel a lot happier when I can see it, even if I can't understand it all, at least I have the confidence of actually going through it, but I will have to rely on my colleagues who have actually gone through the evaluation. So I will be supporting this application.
councillor Holm?
I thank councillor Gray for covering the things that I wanted to, it's very kind. It is about viability, and I am upset that we don't have the viability statement in front of us for members to read, but I think as others have said, and councillor Gray said, I think I certainly trust councillor Bolton's opinion on that, and as he's seen it, I won't press that any further, but in future I would like to make sure that we, as members, do have that information in front of us in pink papers if necessary. I think the question is, can we get a better development that is viable on this site? And I know the applicant has jumped through hoops to try and satisfy us, he's going to have to do it again if we agree to this, in order, when he brings it back at the detailed stage. I think I have to take my steer from the ward councillors if they're happy on this, it's a very tough decision, but I think I'm probably going to have to support this. It's not perfect, but I don't think we're going to get perfection. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Foris, you want to come back?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to come back. I would just reiterate what councillor Gray said, and he's absolutely spot on. The difficulty we face here is, we have an application that we're looking at in terms of the principle of development and establishing that, and nobody would argue with that, so it could be really difficult for members to say we object because of the content of it, because that's what we're not looking at this evening, which makes the whole thing really difficult for members. Had it come back as a full application, that would have been one thing, but it hasn't, it's come back with identifying the principle of development. I just hope going forward, because I would find it very difficult to go against it on that basic principle, that more work can be done with the ward councillors, and the developer, and the residents, to come up with a scheme that's indicative, and it works, and is viable, and can be deliverable, because I don't think the work stops here with what's in front of us tonight, and I think some of the local residents need to be assured of that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. I see Elizabeth Sims nodding with everything you and councillor Gray said, so can I ask her to come in at this point? Because I think councillor Gray got absolutely right, that outline is very difficult.
Thank you, Chairman. I suppose it's fair to acknowledge that outline applications aren't necessarily everybody's preference. I've heard many times members say to me, I wish applications were always submitted in full, and that would obviously give you all the detail you want all the time, but you don't need me to remind you, of course, the law does present the opportunity for applicants to submit an outline application, because it is there as a vehicle to test the water and establish the principle, without having to go to all the costs of providing all the detail, if in fact, they're not going to get any further than outline stage. So that has been a long established opportunity in planning law, and there's no indication that the government's going to renade from that, so I can't promise you that your wish will come true anytime soon. Clearly, some applications do come forward in full, but it's certainly not unusual to use the outline opportunity. But what I would of course remind you is, in fact councillor Forisewski has answered her own question in saying, when the reserve matters do come forward, in the first instance, at pre-application stage, and then of course, when it comes to you as joint planning committee, you will have that opportunity again to ensure that all the detail that you are looking for at this stage that perhaps isn't there, is there, and you will be able to fully examine those remaining matters to make sure they do comply with your expectations. So the two bits go together, they are one planning permission, and the permission you grant this evening, if you do grant it, will be contingent upon the reserve matters coming forward and being acceptable before they can obviously carry out the development. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and I think councillor Gray, you wanted to come back?
I'll come back very briefly. Thank you for letting me come back, Chairman. I think developers have got to consider carefully about using this outline. Where there's a contentious application, then councillors are going to express some of the concerns that we've done now, and they should consider carefully, when they've got to come back with reserve matters, and certainly from my part, we will judge that reserve matter very, very critically. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much indeed. Before we move to the recommendation, do the officers wish to say anything further, summing up? No further questions? Can I move then to recommendation A, that subject to the completion of S106 legal agreements to 17% affordable housing, infrastructure contributions towards off-site highways improvements, primary education, provision of and public access to the rear open space, management of maintenance and maintenance of onsite SUDs, and conditions 1 to 12 as amended with condition 3, and informances 1 to 23, that permission be granted? May have those in favour of the recommendation please show?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Those against?
Two.
Abstentions?
None.
None? Thank you very much indeed. Outline permission is granted. We move now to, if I can find the page, item B1, WA 2016, Bleak, 1419, Woodside Park, Castle Lane, Godalming.
That's now, if you look at the update sheet, that now is gone because of, I believe it's already been...
The update sheet, sorry, I was...
Oh, sorry.
I apologise for that, but, yeah.
There is no longer an update.
Peter?
Sorry, Chairman, just to come in, the recommendation B remains as set out in the agenda, so we do need to...
Oh, I do beg your pardon, therefore that was amended on...
I think there's a top of it that should be crossed through on the update sheet, I think it's an issue with formatting, but it's definitely there.
I'm on the wrong page, can you give me the page number?
Here we go.
Chairman? It's page 85 of the agenda, that's what you're on.
Thank you very much indeed. I do apologise, that was not very clever. Recommendation B, that if the requirements of recommendation A are not met, permission B refused for the following reasons, stated on page 85 and 86. Agreed? Thank you very much indeed. Now move to item B1, WA 2016, 1419, Woodside Park, Castle Lane, Godalming, GU71LG. Tim, I think you're introducing this.
Thank you, Chairman. So members, the site is located to the south and east of Woodside Park, industrial and commercial site. It currently comprises a large pond and well wooded area surrounding. The proposal is a change of use of the... The proposal is to change the use of the land to perform public open space, which will be used by the future occupiers of the residential dwellings under application 161418. The space would also be open for members of the public to use. The proposal includes provision of new footpaths and footways within the site as shown here, along with a timber walkway to cross here, really using the pond as a focal point within the scheme. No new buildings are proposed within this site. Although the proposal is technically inappropriate development in the green belt, officers consider that the benefit of provision of the public open space, which would link with the proposed residential development at Woodside Park, are the required very special circumstances in this case to allow the proposal. Officers consider the proposal would be a positive benefit to both future residents and the public. This is the wider context plan with the site over here, just showing it in relation to the development at Woodside Park. The main linkages through the site would be from here and through here, linking up, as outlined earlier, to some informal public footpaths to be formed within the site. There's so many issues with this application. As outlined earlier, the proposal is technically in conflict with green belt policy, however, the reasons given, officers consider that there are very special circumstances in this case to allow it. The proposal will require provision of new walkways and routes throughout the site. These are limited visual impact and details of which will be secured by condition. There are no nearby residential properties that would be affected materially by the proposal. The proposal will provide enhancement to residential amenity through the enjoyment of the public open space. These are matters of judgment for members in this case. So overall, chairman, officers recommend permission be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. I have no problems with this, but just one question, who will manage it?
Sorry, Peter.
Thank you, chairman, yes, it's an important point. Under the legal agreement for the application we just considered, that covers the ongoing management and maintenance and provision alongside that housing development, so it will be brought together and managed by a management company, taken forward, but the specification of that management will need to be agreed by the council. Hope that helps. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Gray.
Councillor Frost has just jumped in and pitched my question. I probably got slightly more concerned. Thank you for that answer insofar as the management company, but this is quite a big piece of land, and we didn't see anything particularly in there that actually evaluates it. What we wouldn't want is this to become a responsibility or a drain on the town without really understanding that and having clear considerations. So what assurances can you give us in terms of the adequacy of the agreement within the first planning application?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, it takes on the principle of a usual management company that we'd have on any open space going forward, so the principles are of, section 106 is there, it's binding on the applicant or the developer, and then future owners of the site to deliver whatever that management and maintenance provision is. We have the power under that obligation to agree that specification and any additional funding to secure it in the long term for that management and maintenance associated with that. That ultimately does come back to future residents, they likely have to pay a charge for that to maintain it, but that is the conventional approach that we would take in any provision of public open space. Sometimes it's incorporated within the development, this is obviously side by side, but it adjoins the site, so it is slightly different to the way it's usually presented, but in principle it's the same way it's secured. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Gray, you want to come back on that?
Yes, just to come back to my point, we actually don't see the section 106 agreement, so we will have to rely on you to negotiate that and to make sure that it's binding. And I have a long memory, so I hope that this management company problem doesn't fail us.
Councillor Holder.
Thank you, chairman. I seem to remember when we did the site visit that the lake was full of old cars and bits of bicycles and things. I rather hope that when this is eventually given to public open space, that in fact the lake is cleared up and made as a suitable site for...
I think I'd use the word filthy. Councillor Foros.
Thank you, chairman. We've already talked about the viability and our concerns around it, and some of the concerns I expressed about deliverability. Is there anything, can I look into the officers for their advice here? Is there anything in the recommendations that we could do to strengthen the position of making sure that this piece of land remains so for perhaps a period of time so it doesn't fall foul of becoming a piece of land that could be developed at a later stage if the viability of it is questionable? I only say that because it's an unknown quantity to us, and I'd like to see as many robust conditions as possible to secure that.
Dan.
Chair, yeah, through you, thank you. Essentially, the section 106 will have an accompanying plan, so anything that comes forward in terms of the reserved matters, that obviously you'll see, and it will come before you in terms of detail, once that's agreed and the plan that you see in terms of design, layout, which will include the public open space as well, you will have control first of all at reserved matters. So when the section 106 actually comes forwards, in terms of the actual illustrative plan, it will be accompanied to the section 106, so it will say that the development should actually be pursuant to the accompanying plan, and on that plan it will be open space and it will be highlighted and it will be hatched, and it should be for that particular reason. So when the section 106 does come forwards, we'll be able to actually control it in terms of covenants by way of actually the management company should oversee the actual public open space, in terms of actually demising any property to freeholders or leaseholders, that there should be service charges to maintain that management company. So all these covenants will bite upon the actual site and upon the actual land, and that runs with the land, so it doesn't actually tie up just the developer, it also binds any successor in title, okay? So with that in mind, the actual accompanying plan will show the public open space, it will have to actually be laid out like that in the section 106, otherwise that's a breach of the actual agreement as well, and that's enforceable. Does that help? It's very legal, but essentially it's covenants, positive and restrictive, as we say.
Councillor Story.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My only concern with this is that it's going to be such a nice piece of land that people will come from far and wide to use it and they've got nowhere to park.
Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, chairman. Perhaps I can have the advice of officers, would it be appropriate to have as an extra condition that a management company is formed and would have the responsibility for managing this...
Peter.
...this part of the land?
Thank you, chairman. I appreciate that it's two different applications, but the earlier application, recommendation A, ties up that requirement, because it's under the same applicant, same ownership, we're able to combine them together, so you'll see, it specifically refers to it and you've agreed that already in the recommendation A. Thank you.
Councillor James.
Thank you, chairman. The only problem I have with that is that the first one is outline only, this isn't an outline change of use. So if when the first one comes back and perhaps we decide we don't like it and we refuse it, then what happens? We've already given permission for all this to take place.
Peter.
Thank you, chairman. There's a requirement and a condition requiring them to be carried out together, so you won't get one without the other, so hopefully that satisfies that point and you won't need to worry about that. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Byrne.
Thank you, chairman. Just a question on process, really. In most applications, these two things go together as one, part of one application. Here we have two separate applications, but the first one we pass, of course, is outline. Is it possible to ask or require the applicant to include both strips of land in their detailed planning application, so it comes in as one, and therefore there is no concern about whether the management company will cope with both the main site, of course, and this new park area?
Again, Peter Cleveland.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you, councillor Byrne. We can't insist on it, no, unfortunately. The applicant's chosen to put it in in this manner, you know, the implications regarding the fee and how that is calculated and things like that, but it's the applicant's choice in how they provide it. We have the means and mechanism to draw them together, so they effectively come together as one form of development, but we can't insist on it being overall in one application. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Hyman.
Thank you. I like the idea of this, but I'm just wondering whether officers can let me know whether there is any difficulty in a management company, obviously which would be supported by the, paid for by the people who live in the new houses. It would be public land, or, I mean, would it be public or private land? It would have, we're being told, public access, and I'm just thinking that if we've got a bunch of people who are effectively paying for it and the public are invited in to use it, and, you know, might use it as they, in ways that the residents don't particularly like it, do we have any safeguards? Is there some way of making sure that that land is not mistreated and that it, I think as others have said, you know, the concern that the town council or Waverley could end up having to pay for it? I mean, I don't have any other problem with this at all, I think it's good, but I just want to be satisfied we aren't going to end up possibly having to pay for things if the residents don't want to.
Peter.
Yes, thank you, chairman, thank you, councillor Hyman. Ultimately, it is public open space, so there's a requirement for it to be made available to anyone, everyone to access it, and that is the same with most public or amenity space that comes forward to a development. That is a requirement of the 106. The management company will control and manage and maintain it and ensure any inappropriate use is controlled and managed through that, so it will fall to their responsibility. So, Daniel wants to come in.
And through you, chair, you've got your basic statutory powers to enforce untidy land, section 215 notice, what we call an untidy land, amenity notice. So if it got too detrimental to the amenity of the neighbourhood, then you have powers in your enforcement toolbox to actually enforce the site as well.
Thank you, Dan. Councillor Frost.
Thank you, chairman. This is nothing new, we've done this before, so we do know how to operate this sort of thing, and I think it's rather nice to have a piece of amenity land attached to this development. So I don't see what we're all worried about, we've done it before, we're experienced in it.
I think it's lovely. Councillor Holder.
Thank you for letting me come back, chairman. I'm just wondering, as it's public open space, does Waverley have some responsibility concerning, say, dog fouling or, who would be responsible for making sure that dogs do?
That's a crime, councillor, under the Clean Neighborhoods and Environment Act, so dog fouling can be dealt with by fixed penalty, it's not really a planning concern.
Thank you very much indeed. Members, I think it's time to move to recommendation, and I'll try and get it right this time, you can probably see why I didn't go to recommendation B last time. Recommendation A, that subject to the conditions 1 to 3 and informances 1 to 5 as set out in the report, permission be granted. Those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please show.
That is, you know...
Unanimous, thank you very much indeed, and therefore recommendation B falls because we did not refuse the permission of the first application. So that completes our meeting. Members, thank you all very much indeed.